Johnson County Council Meeting. If you, Mr. Byers, if you would like, oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Amy, you're first. Present.
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 Here.
Here.
And Councilman Myers, if you will do the invocation, please, and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, please. Bow your heads and pray, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight as representatives of our county. May this council's discussions be marked by respect, cooperation, and our common goal to serve your people. We seek your wisdom and guidance as we deliberate on matters that will greatly affect the shaping of our county's future. Please bless our county's public servants, all, some 700 strong. Please bless our officials, both elected and appointed, with wisdom, integrity, and empathy. Please bless and protect our first responders. Please protect those who protect us. Lord, we ask for unity of all our officials and that they work together to achieve the greater good of our county. We ask these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to tonight's agenda, there are a couple of minor changes. We need to add, under the consent agenda, item 11 from the Health Department, which is a request to transfer funds for a new advertising line item for promotions and events. And then number 12 is for the Prosecutor's Office, and it is to create a new account for witness fees, so it's more of an administrative type thing. And we also need to eliminate item number two, the approval of the 311-24 regular meeting minutes. Those are still in the works. So those are the changes to tonight's agenda. Ready for a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Ditmers and a second by Mr. Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Moving on to public comments. We are limited to five minutes per person. If there's anyone on Zoom or in the audience that would like to have time for a public comment, make yourself known, please.
I'd like to make a comment.
State your name, please.
Melinda Grismer.
Go ahead.
I would like to congratulate Indian Creek Whitley FFA chapters. They earned the state champion titles and are heading to nationals, so congratulations to them. I'd also like to congratulate Whitley Jazz Band One and Shades of Blue Vocal Jazz. They are the 2024 ISMA Jazz State Finalists. And I'd also like to give my appreciation to all of the law enforcement and for Festival County, Country, with all their hard work with the Eclipse events and how everybody came together. And we were fantastic hosts for those people out of town, and it was a wonderful experience. So thank you to them and anyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing we're hearing no one else, we will move on to item B under Routine Matters, the Consent Agenda. It's by a single motion, the board approves the following items, which may include salary ordinances, amendments, additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. Any items listed on the Consent Agenda may be removed by a council member and moved to the Regular Agenda. Does anyone have anything on the agenda they would like to talk about or possibly have moved to the Regular Agenda?
No, but I have a question. Do we have to do roll call votes?
We do since Melinda's appearing permanently on Zoom.
So yes, we do, since we have a councilperson on Zoom. Okay, so if there are no changes to the Consent Agenda, I am open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. So we have a motion by Mr.?
JT.
By JT and a second by Mr. John Eddy. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, I forgot, I'm sorry, Amy.
Ron Deere?
Aye.
John Myers?
Aye.
Jonathan T. Myers?
Aye.
Pamela Burton?
Aye.
John Mallers?
Aye.
John Ditmers?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Amy. Okay, moving on to C6 on the agenda, salary ordinances, amendments, additional appropriations, reductions, and transfer. Emergency Management is first on the agenda. Hi, Stephanie, you live.
Yeah, I'm living. Stephanie Seisting, Emergency Management Director. This is to put a food line item in my budget and transfer money from one of my other accounts into that, but it's not what I asked for on this, it's less. So what I'm asking for is for $438.56 is what I spent.
Was that because?
That was from yesterday's for the total solar eclipse to feed everybody that was in the INT, EOC, and the dispatchers.
So Amy, since we advertised how we can go low, correct?
Okay.
Yeah. And I did ask.
Everybody survived okay? Anything you want to report to us, let us know.
No, it was, we worked well together. We had good food. He grilled for us, bought his grill, and we got to see the eclipse, so it was really good.
Awesome. Well, congratulations, I heard everyone did a phenomenal job.
We did, they all worked hard. When I asked them to do this, they worked hard, so.
I recognize.
I mean, it's like a test, you know, when something happens, I can count on everybody that was there.
Yeah, it was publicized on TV and other places. Were there any challenges other than eating his burgers?
No. No, just being, I mean, we all sat around and talked, we watched, you know, they had the, we had NDOT cameras up so we could see the roads, so we could see the traffic where it was red, all the way down and all the way up, so.
Any other questions for Stephanie? Open for a motion, please.
Motion to approve. Emergency Management 1001, 0127 for 438, what was the last number?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Deere, a second by JT. Amy?
Ron Deere?
Aye.
John Myers?
Aye.
Jonathan T. Myers?
Aye.
Pamela Burton?
Aye.
John Mallers?
Aye.
John Ditmers?
Aye.
Melinda Grismer?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Community Corrections Juvenile Project Income.
Hello, good evening. Damon Cox, Assistant Director. This line item on the agenda is an additional appropriation, is actually a donation that was made to us by Texas Christian University, which houses the Care and Purpose Institute of Child Development for $500, and we're just appropriating it into our operations line so that we can utilize it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Cox?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by John Ditmers and a second by John Eddy.
Ron Deere?
Aye.
John Myers?
Aye.
Jonathan T. Myers?
Aye.
Pamela Burton?
Aye.
John Mallers?
Aye.
John Ditmers?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Number three is Innkeeper's Tax Collection.
I'm Ken Kosky, Director of Festival Country, Indiana, the county tourism agency. I wanted to let you know that since we last visited, we completed our guide to the entire county, so you have that in front of you. We also have the Events and Festival and Farmer's Market Guide, so you can plan your summer accordingly. And then we have our annual report, and a lot of the questions that you've asked over the course of the last year, it's all in here, statistics, economic impact, every dollar that is spent on this returns $16, so just a lot of those facts. As always, if you ever have any questions after reviewing that, feel free to reach out to me, but our grant program is well underway, providing sponsorship of all the concert series throughout the county, funding the county parks festivals, so they applied for a grant and received that, and we're moving the ice skating, which was very successful in Franklin, to Edinburgh this winter, so that'll be a big boost for that small town. And then the star of the show, obviously, is the eclipse, and I'd like to reiterate what Melinda and everyone said, that I'd like to personally thank Stephanie and the Sheriff's Department. Because of all the planning that they did to make sure everything went smoothly, we could focus on what our part was, and that was to get Eclipse glasses into the hand of any resident visitor who wanted one or anyone that was having an event, whether it's a church parking lot that was open, schools that opened their parking lots, American Legions, just anybody. So our goal going into this was learning from 2017 that everybody was leaving one spot at the same time and causing traffic issues. So we sent out a letter about a year ago and enlisted anybody that wanted to have an event, that we would publicize it for you, get you Eclipse glasses. We ended up having 50 sites across the county. So when this was over, we didn't hear any traffic issues in our county. Now, maybe when they got out on 65, it was a little slow getting back to Chicago and Louisville, but even that wasn't as bad as 2017. Our visitor center alone served 2,280 folks in three days. They were from 28 different states and 10 countries. And we're going to deep dive into some more data by Friday. We have this service called Placer that tracks people's cell phones, so I think what we're going to find is that there was more than 10 countries represented and more than 28 states represented at the Eclipse events throughout the county, so I'll be glad to share that once that data comes in, but everybody really said what an outstanding time they had, and Mayor Barnett stopped down to my office today and said that the governor's office recognized this area specifically and said that we are now on the map because it's all anybody was talking about. So congratulations to everybody that made that possible. So that's all I have on that, and just here for the quarterly appropriation.
I do have a question about the, you have a surplus of Eclipse glasses?
Yes, we will be donating those to those organizations so that they can send them to Latin America for the next eclipse, which I understand is happening in the fall, perhaps.
Yeah, I saw that on TV that they were, yeah.
Yeah, we distributed about 85,000 pair, so we have that many left over, but those that we do will get donated.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Kosky? If not, I'm ready for a motion, please.
I move to approve as presented.
Second.
John Eddy made a first, and this gentleman right here. Mr. Mallers made a second. I have too many Johns up here.
Ron Deere?
Aye.
John Myers?
Aye.
Jonathan T. Myers?
Aye.
Pamela Burton?
Aye.
John Mallers?
Yes.
John Ditmers?
Aye.
Melinda Grismer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Number four on the agenda, Community Crossings Grant. I think I remember your name.
I hope so. Luke Maston, Highway Supervisor. Items four and five are actually for the same purpose. These two appropriations fund the total contract amount for the Community Crossings 2023 Second Call Award that we received from NDOT. So under that program, NDOT supplies 50% of the funding with state funds, that is the appropriation in the new Fund 9168, and then the county matches the other 50% with our local funding, which is the funding request for 1173.
Luke, is everyone okay? Do you want to go ahead and talk about the MVH restricted as well?
That's the 1173. So really, both of those appropriations are for that same community crossings.
I got you.
So one's a grant, one's a match?
Correct, yes.
Why are they 75 cents different? That's what I was wondering.
I actually thought Amy would ask that, but she didn't. The exact amount of the contract, the construction contract, ends in 50 cents, so the grant matches exactly what 50%, of that contract is. I wasn't too worried about a quarter in our own funds, so I just made that a round number. I would have made them both round numbers, but we needed that grant amount to be exact.
You may have said, and I missed it, is this, are these funds dedicated to a single project, or is it just funds for projects in their aggregate?
The Community Crossings Program has two calls a year, and we apply for specific projects. Then if we receive the award, of course, we receive 50% of whatever the contract amount is. So in this scenario, we actually applied for the full $1 million grant. When we put the project out to bid, the bids actually came in quite a bit lower than we expected. But that funding, then, is that is specifically tied to the projects that we apply for. In this case, we applied for a deep asphalt mill on Morgantown Road between Stones Crossing and Fairview Road, as well as the same scope on Peterman Road north of Fairview Road up to county line.
I got a question. Is it, is this area of Morgantown, it used to be, at one point, it was considered maybe for widening that as part of the whole I-69 thing, is that still in the works? And if so, is this going to be something that helps that, or is this going to be paved and then undone for that?
The timeframe for Morgantown is far enough in the future that there's no concern about potentially wasting any money here. When the edit was passed, the Smith Valley Road project as a whole was the first priority, and it'll still be several years before we have that funding built up to completely fund that project. At that point, then, we'll start looking at Morgantown, some of the frontage roads or frontage road extensions, but in terms of the lifespan of what we're doing in this project, there are no concerns about any wasting money.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Maston on items four and five? If not, I'll call for a motion.
Move for approval of Community Crossing Grant 2324, 9168, MVH restricted, 1173, as submitted.
Second.
A motion by Ron Deere and a second by John Eddy.
Ron Deere?
Aye.
John Myers?
Aye.
Jonathan T. Myers?
Aye.
Pamela Burton?
Aye.
John Mallers?
Yes.
John Ditmers?
Aye.
Melinda Grismer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number six on the agenda, Courthouse Maintenance.
Jason, Jason Miller, Courthouse Maintenance. I'm here tonight to ask for a $320,000 additional appropriation from KUMCAP for replacement of the courthouse air conditioners. They're into the end of their lifespan, we're having problems with them, and I'm trying to be proactive before I have a catastrophic failure, and it's going to cost us a fortune to put money in something that.
How old are they?
They're pushing 20.
Are there any salvage value?
No.
Expensive stuff.
Very expensive.
Any questions for Mr. Mallor? Not, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve, item C6.
Second.
We have a motion by JT, a second by John Eddy.
Ron Deere?
Aye.
John Myers?
Aye.
Jonathan T. Myers?
Aye.
Pamela Burton?
Aye.
John Mallers?
Aye.
John Ditmers?
Aye.
Melinda Grismer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Waits and Measures.
Greg Nelson, Waits and Measures.
Hi, good.
I'm asking for, in a full-time person, my previous director was helping me, and he's had, he's basically done. He told me the summer he might help me if I needed the help, but he wasn't going to work all summer and just didn't want to put that many hours in. He retired, took over in '19, and so he's been helping me since then, and he's basically says that he's tired of working that much, so if I could, I'd like to pass a few things up to you.
How many new gas stations are you dealing with?
One just, well, one right now is getting ready to open, and there's a possibility of two more this year.
I know you have to hit a lot of spots.
Yes, I have 59 stations, but I will partner this, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have had them together before.
Who retired?
You're good, take your time. Yep. If you want, you want us to pass him down? Got it?
Thank you.
On here, this is the list of counties, we're number 11, population and what we do.
Thank you.
You'll see on the population, there's only one county that's got one inspector. I spoke with him today, sorry to interrupt some people, but when I spoke with him today, he, he has quite a few, he's in Lafayette, Vanderburgh County, and he's the only inspector, but he has quite a few, they let him use Community Corrections. I guess he has a lot of rowdy basketball fans up there that kind of get in trouble, and they let, not the prisoners themselves, but he has a lot of help that has to put into Community Corrections hours, so that's why that, you see, anything above us other than him has, is only one inspector, I mean, has more than one inspector. But the other, like I said, we do, I could do retail scales, that's Walmarts, Krogers, any, any small grocery stores, specialty stores, have scales for food and produce and stuff like that. Non-commercial tests are, most of them are, I do health department scales, I do, and most of these are wrestling scales, which is for all the schools in the county that does their, that has wrestling programs. The large-scale tests are, I have to go through, I can't do them myself, they use like, on the average, of 68,000 pounds. They're brought in by semi, they're thousand-pound blocks, they do the test and I verify it. I don't think the commissioners would buy me a scale truck for that, but that's what that is. Have to do pharmacy scales, gram scales, they're with the, a lot of the grain reese use the gram scales, and then have about a half a dozen gold and silver jewelry scales that buy gold, I have to do those also. 2020, we had, we, they're tests, they're not, they're not like a station, is what's misleading, like Shell out here at 31, and Jeff, it could have 36 pumps, or 36 tests on it, because each, each island usually has six or seven pumps, or, yeah, pumps on them, so I have to do a test out of each grade of gas, not, not just one island. The Casey's up in Greenwood, the new one, has 112 tests, takes me at least all day, and that's what the help, Jared was helping. I went up, I went from 1,786 to 2,106 tests, like I said, we've got a gas station getting ready to open up in Nenova. I've been told that on 135, Myers wants to build another station right across from Krogers, of course, and then there's a new station, I didn't misspell, I didn't misspell it, it's called Wawa. They're not, I've seen them in Florida and stuff, and they're, they're pretty decent-sized gas stations, so, but that one's, that one's a possibility. I mean, I know they asked Greenwood for one place, and they turned them down, but, so I'm, that's the last thing I heard about that. But it's just every year goes up, also have to do high-flow tests. I have 43 high-flow tests, which is the diesel pump, diesel pumps. Each one of them, if a company comes in, I have to, or if I do them, it has to be done 50 gallons at a time, at least, and I have to do two sides, so if, like the Flying J, Whitley has got 12, 12 islands, they have a master side and a slave side, and I have to take 100 or 50 out of each, each one of those, per state guidelines. So I do 86 tests of those, and I have quite a few of the counties above us, there's several of them that don't even have any high-flow stations, so Johnson County's growing, you all know that for a fact, and I'd been trying to get ahold of the state director, he has some medical problems, he's been off and on, I'm going to contact him because I want this person to be certified, like Jerry was, and that way, if I'm gone, he can, or if I'm on vacation or something, because I have quite a few, you know, I have three weeks vacation, he can, he can do all of it, but it'll take two or so months, at least two months, usually, depends on what the state director thinks before they can test and get certified.
You're to be commended, Mr. Nelson, you, I know you work hard. I personally witnessed Henry County, and they had a heck of a rig. And there were two guys on there.
Yeah.
The guys I watched.
I have a slide-in unit that holds 160 gallons.
Do you get to keep all the test fuel?
No, 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 I get that asked a lot. What do you do with the gas? I have to put it right back in the ground.
Is the person assisting you now, is he like, okay, I'm done? Or I know you have a line item to pay this person, so is he staying on? Give us a little more detail about that, because my biggest concern here is, is a new employee halfway through the year.
I understand.
And so, he's quitting, he's walking out, you couldn't go with part-time with his money if he does and make it work till budget time, so can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, like I said, he said he'd help me some if I needed it, but he preferred really not to. So I guess I could try to find a part-time person. But, uh, if I'm gone, they can't do anything because they're, they won't be certified. State should be full-time, uh, to be certified.
Right.
It's just a waste of their time.
How long does it, does a certification take?
Not very long. I mean, it's a written test and, uh, so.
Your other guy says he would be open to possibly helping out if it was necessary.
Yeah, for a short time, but I, he, he, he did give me, he wouldn't give me a time.
Oh, I understand. Um, I also, and, and I'll let Mr. Dear speak on the job classification. I read the, how you came up with your classification for the job description. And I'm not saying I disagree with it at all. It sounds very reasonable. And I support what you're doing and I think this is much needed. But we do have a plan in process for new job descriptions and classifications, so, Mr. Dear.
Yeah, we have the, the WIS, we met with John, uh, John Dittmers and I met with WIS, uh, last month, and they're in the process of doing two things. One is to, uh, look at our longevity system that we suggest, that we proved, uh, to be considered. But the second one is that we, they are in place for new job descriptions. And, uh, if y'all recall back in November, we passed a procedure for how to process job descriptions. Elizabeth, do you happen to, did we ever get that distributed? Remember when we passed it in November? I don't know if Kirsten distributed it or not, do you know? To elected officials and department heads? The actual process, we approved in November, but they're in place now. And as we, at least as I have suggested, that, you know, we need to have a routine. We have the routine, we have the process in place. And I would suggest that, uh, the reclassification, or the classification of this position be reviewed by WIS. We can get that back in a couple of weeks. And they'll verify that it's accurate or it's not, uh, that it should be modified and considered by the council.
Great. What's the requirements by state statute? How often do you have to inspect these?
Once a year.
Everything has to be done once a year? How do commissioners vote on this? Is it unanimous?
It's just getting too much for one person.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Like I said, uh,
Kevin Walls, Johnson County Commissioner. We've looked at this. I've met with Greg in depth on this. The number of, you see the number of inspections he has to do annually by himself. Jerry's checking out, has got health problems, and he really doesn't want to work. And with what we're saying, you want two weeks more for Wagner and Shealy to step into this? You want him to send a guy to get trained? You're just prolonging that process in doing this. I think the description that we wrote up and we balanced it with other departments with that. And what Greg neglected to say was, before he gets certified, he will start out at a lot lower salary. And once he gets that certification, because it's not guaranteed, whoever he hires is going to be able to get certified. Because it's, you got to take the test and pass it. So we'll keep that salary low until that point. When that point hits, he gets certified, then we'll raise that salary up. And that's why we balanced it. And we did an in-depth study on it. I know Barb helped on this, putting it together and those numbers.
Well, I, I would suggest that perhaps, since you're doing the, bringing them in to lower salary, that we approve it subject to the ranking being verified by WIS, and that won't delay it.
Okay.
I just had one question. Um, you said everything has to be, um, certified every year? So like a gas pump that isn't certified, is it, can it not be used?
No, it can be used.
It can still be used?
Just like there was, like during the COVID, during COVID, for about two years.
Wow.
State told us do not go in any large box stores. So there was, oh, your Krogers, K-Mart's, everything, they advise all inspectors to stay out.
So, so absent COVID, that still would apply if you don't get it done, that stuff can still be used? Okay.
Mr. Dittmers?
Just, just real quick, like if we didn't do this and asked for this to go, just basically be required, it's, it's a definite need, so don't hear me saying I disagree with this. But if we asked for this to go into the regular budget cycle, what does that mean for what you need? I realize you need it now, but from a consistency standpoint, kind of to what Pam's question was and to what Ron is talking about as far as where we are, as far as routine's concerned, can, is, is there a Plan Bs to kind of bootstrap this thing together to get you to the budget cycle or no?
Just try to find a part-time person that will help.
And then the, the follow-up to that is, uh, it's about a 20% increase, looks to me like, in numbers from 20 to 24, based on what you gave us. And the only suggestion I would have is, this, this need looks to me like it was there last budget cycle.
It has, but I was also banking on Jerry being there.
Yeah, so it's, in that respect, it's a replacement.
That's my fault.
That's okay, yeah.
Once he leaves in like November, I don't bother him.
Yeah.
You know, he goes on vacation, uh, he's smart, he goes where it's warm. And stuff like that, so, uh, I don't bother him. And then when I called him this spring, uh, or this beginning of this year, uh, is when he told me. And, uh, that's when I got with the commissioner.
Gotcha, okay.
And, uh, said, I'm going to be in trouble.
So in that respect, it's, it's a replacement, not new.
It was after the budget, that's why.
That's the difference, it feels to me like.
I could not help that part, I'm sorry.
No.
I understand.
Oh, you're fine.
Please don't, yeah, please don't take, take what I'm saying as finger pointing, it's not.
Like I said, the way it works, ever since, and it's worked that way ever since he's left. You know, I call him, I say, hey, you know, you, uh, still good for this year and everything. He's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
But this year it wasn't, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I, I think the consensus, go ahead.
Hey, you look at Jerry, the previous director, his knowledge, his experience, his certification, you know, went a lot quicker with him and Greg together. You get somebody new in there, I think it's going to take longer because they're getting trained and they're learning.
They have to, they have, I'm sorry. They have to, they have to trail me. I, I'm basically their teacher. They get the information, they will go out and get book, books from the state, and then they will study them, take the test, what they learned in the book, what I have taught them, and then, then they can, they will become certified.
My point is, is this with Mr. Napier, helping him, the previous director, has the knowledge and knew what to do, and things go a lot quicker. You get somebody new in there, they're learning. You go to Meyer store or Walmart store, you guys have to do the scales at the cash registers too. You got to do every scale in there. And if you're there with somebody new that's learning, it's going to take a lot longer. It's going to put them farther behind. So I'm okay with, go ahead and approve on this tonight.
And, and the request is in a whole new, brand-new position where there wasn't any funding of it before. It's going from part-time to full-time. So, you know, I guess my suggestion is what I suggested to Commissioner Walls, that, that we, I'll make a motion that we approve this subject to verification of the salary, on the, with WIS reviewing it and allows it to go forward.
Okay, I'm not sure what to do this, because I think other people had questions and there was a motion made. So what do I need to do?
Well, you can call for further discussion.
Yeah, it was a motion and first, second, and discussion. These were questions, not discussions theoretically. I made a motion to.
Second?
So we have a, a, a motion by Mr. Dear as presented with being, uh,
Subject to the ranking by WIS.
And a second by John Eddy.
Correct.
Correct.
Is there any further discussion?
Can we have some discussion?
I'm going to say this first, so he'll know where I stand. I agree with everything we've talked about, and I also agree this was a need long before now. But, um, I personally would rather wait for budget time, because I think we, we've gone this long, I think we can make it through to the end of the year or until budget time. It is something that I would support, and I don't think you're going to have a problem at all with the classification. I, I think you're, you're right on the nose there. So I am in support of it, but my vote will be to wait until budget time. So, yes.
What are we going to do in the meantime? We do wait till budget time to get somebody in there.
Right.
When you got uncertified scales in Johnson County, the ramifications of that will be run really deep.
Right, and that's why we're here. Then one of the problems with the budget process is that it occurs, you know, in August, September, October. And then it doesn't take place until January. So that creates, you know, there's always this lag between need and, uh, when something is needed. But that's why we're here, to approve an additional appropriation. And I think it's warranted at this point in time.
You know, I have, I have, uh, I have, uh, seventy-five, no, uh, I lost my note, I'm sorry. I have four weeks vacation. I haven't used basically any of it yet.
Yeah, we're familiar with that in the county. Unfortunately, that happens a lot in a lot of departments. I understand. So is there any other discussion?
I guess I just had two points, uh, and I'm kind of in between, so I'm just trying to be objective, just kind of lay the legal landscape here. The, the statute, from a council standpoint, does require the council to appropriate such sums of money as necessary for the salary maintenance of the office. So if Greg is saying that he can't maintain the inspection of these scales, I'm not sure if waiting till budget time comports with the statute.
Oh, so it's a moot point then?
I, I mean, I think it's a good discussion, but I think ultimately if, it's a determination that you guys have to make, if it's necessary or not. So if Greg has persuaded you that this is a necessary additional appropriation to make sure he doesn't fall further behind, to the citizens are protected, to make sure the scales are accurate, then yes, the council should appropriate these monies to ensure that the office is, is maintained and can do its job. And then the other point real quick is, on the state salary ranges, the minimum weight and measure inspector three ranges from forty-two thousand nine hundred to sixty thousand one twelve. So it's definitely within.
So they're well within what they suggested, but we still would like to go through the process.
Yeah, just for point of reference.
What are the ramifications of being out of compliance?
Nothing legal, but you would have citizens who are potentially overpaying. So we're already dealing with inflation, so there, there is the potential here where, whether on purpose or accident.
Or underpaying.
Or underpaying, sure.
Correct.
You do have, you run the risk of citizens not paying what they should, whether under or over.
Okay. Anybody else? Any further discussion? So we have a motion on the floor, subject to classification going through WIS for processing, and a second.
Verification, and then that will either, it will say where it's off or low or high.
Correct, throughout process.
If it says that we're low, what do we, is it going to change?
I think that, I think that we would have to follow that guideline. I mean, yeah, I think with, with what WIS says. Right. I mean, anyone else? I mean, that's the whole reason we're doing it. Barb want to say something?
He's just verifying.
Oh, okay. Anybody else?
Well, yeah, I've got a question on what John just asked. Regardless of what WIS says, setting the salary, as long as we're inside that range, is ours to set, right?
Right, correct.
So that's not going to have necessarily a bearing on what this pay is.
As long as it's within that range.
Correct.
Correct.
That's what, that was.
Was that the question? I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
Also, if I could, uh, with Barb's help, it's basically, uh, mirrored off of WIS, uh, off Veterans Fair. Me and the Director of Veterans Fair makes the same thing. And this person, after the certification, would be making what his full-time.
We got that email and the details are in there.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, oh, no, 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 we got the email and the, the numbers are in there explicitly explaining that, so. Yeah, she did a good job. So we, we do have all those numbers and, and all of that. But still, I think the consensus is, since we do have a process in place, we'd like to get the certification through WIS, verified. Okay, so we have a, go ahead.
So this number that you've got here, that's what you're intending to pay the person, correct?
After certification.
Yes. So why are we relying on WIS at this point in time? Why are we relying on an outside source that circumvents this council to set a salary?
Because as a council, we have agreed that all new job descriptions would go through this process. This is what he is asking, not what we have approved. Once WIS, once WIS does the classification and this amount falls within that guideline.
So this is my point. We should just approve this.
So I would disagree with that, because I think we, we got WIS set up as a validation process.
For description.
No, and for salary range as well.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm just, well, not to. Wholeheartedly do not agree with that.
Not to monkey this up anymore, but maybe this actually just makes this another moot point. Statute does say the compensation of a county inspector of weights and measures shall be determined by the board, which in this case is the board of commissioners and paid out of the county treasury. So I think, again, if the commissioners have determined this is the salary that should be appropriate for weights and measures in this particular case, statute at least punts that to the commissioners to determine, and then it just goes to you guys to appropriate that dollar amount.
So if the commissioners approve it, we have no say as to whether to pay it or not?
Whether.
It then, it then goes back to whether it's necessary or not. So it, it starts with them. It doesn't really clarify it too much, I guess. But that's, again, they're, they're kind of determining, and then the question to you guys, is it necessary or not? If it is, the motion approved, move on.
So if, and I'm, I'm being respectful to the commissioners. If the commissioner said this is a hundred thousand dollar position and they authorized that, and that was out of sorts with what WIS, as our consultant, says it should be, we have no choice.
You do, if, if you determine that the hundred thousand dollar salary is not necessary for the office to run. So if, if you are going to rely on Wagner, and they're going to say the salary is thirty-eight, nine, and Commissioner Walls is up there saying, well, we want it to be a hundred thousand, you wouldn't have to appropriate it at a hundred thousand, you could just appropriate it wherever it was necessary.
So we're right back to where we started.
But it's not, I'm trying to track.
Yeah.
And all we're asking for is validation, is my point, and John Dittmers.
Greg?
Yes, sir.
And you're not going to fill the part-time position, you get this position? What's that part-time, what do you have in that part-time?
Twelve-five or twelve-six.
Okay.
Sorry. Twelve-five, I believe it's twelve-five.
So.
And we go to work.
You're going to transact towards this?
Yeah.
And eliminate part-time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if no one else has any discussion, Amy, I, we have a first and a second, so I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Aye. John Myers.
Aye.
John T. Myers.
No.
Game over.
No.
John Mallard.
No.
John Dittmers.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to D, other business. Approval of Johnson County Redevelopment Commission 2023 Annual Report.
Thank you. Jeff Peters, financial advisor to the Redevelopment Commission. Several years ago, the legislature developed additional reporting for redevelopment commissions for those annual reports to be prepared, filed with the executive of the unit that created them and the fiscal body and the Department of Local Government Finance. New legislation effective for this year is not only is it filed with you as the fiscal body, but it must be presented. So before you and your packets, you should have the annual report. The Redevelopment Commission members and officers are listed there. President Rob Henderson, Vice President Kevin Walls, Secretary Arlie Money, Member Brian Baird, Member Ronald West, non-voting school board member Scott Alexander. The employees for the Redevelopment Commission are none. Under C, revenues received, you have currently two allocation areas established, one that runs along the I-69 corridor, one that runs along the I-65 corridor. Those amounts of receipt, and this is the first year of collection for those. And remember with the, the TIF area and the allocation area, the county RDC established a certain geography where they locked the tax base for those geographies at that point in time. You've now had one year of growth in assessed value in those two areas. For the I-65. For the I-65 area, the amount of receipts were thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-four cents. For the I-69 area, it was ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. And also, the Redevelopment Commission utilizes an economic development fee fund, and the revenue for that in twenty-three was sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. So the total was just over a hundred and eighteen thousand. Section D, the expenditures during twenty-three, they were minimal, mostly complying with statute of certain obligations the RDC has to facilitate. Biggest expenditure were financial consultant fees of about fifty-six hundred dollars, total expenditures a little over fifty-nine hundred. There were no loans or grants executed by the Redevelopment Commission in twenty-three. Total funds on hand under section F. The Economic Development Fee Fund was two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. The I-65 allocation area fund is thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-four cents. The I-69 allocation area fund is ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifteen cents, for a total of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty-seven cents. The Redevelopment Commission summary of activities, it continued to identify various areas in the county needing economic development and redevelopment, and the study of the same. So what your Redevelopment Commission is going to continue to do until such time as you have some development coming forward that requires incentive, additional infrastructure, investments, bonding of that source, they will continue to study those areas to see what they can do to facilitate that. And then any of those opportunities that arise, you'll be coming, or the Redevelopment Commission will be coming back to you and the commissioners in order to execute financing plans, incentive packages, things like that, to get additional economic development and redevelopment to occur. Typically, what you can expect as we go forward is you've identified these two master areas, and over time, as you have redevelopment come specifically, you may part some of those out and say, okay, we're going to use this amount for this factory, and we're going to flesh it out with utilities, road access, different things. Use that money that they actually will generate in the form of property taxes that don't get shared with the tax base, and use that to fund those infrastructure investments that you're going to need in order to attract that business. And done correctly, you'll do that so that it combines or connects different areas so that then you'll have another area that's already fleshed out with utilities for somebody else to come in and do the same. And again, done correctly, I think you'll have multiple areas that do this, and instead of having two allocation areas, you might have two dozen over time. But that is the overall strategy. Under section H, outstanding obligations, bonds, et cetera, leases, there are none at this point in time. Under additional information, the areas for I-65 and I-69, there is a, a time limit on allocation areas that you establish for redevelopment commissions, and it is currently twenty-five years from the first obligation that you issue against it. So currently, as you're seeing very little revenue come in and these areas start to mature and draw economic development, that clock does not tick for you. But if we get something where we have an incentive package that needs to be done, infrastructure that needs to be constructed, and you're going to issue bonds in order to do that, at that point in time, then it will be a twenty-five-year clock in which this allocation area will use its revenue across that twenty-five-year period. Then it will expire, and everything that was captured as incremental revenue at that point in time will then go back to the tax base of the county and help in lowering the tax rate for all the different units of government that use that funding. The last section are a list of the parcels for both of those areas that you can look at with your leisure. Any questions that I could answer for you?
So in the future, potential sewer development can be bonded from redevelopment commission funds?
Correct.
And Commissioner Walls, just help me understand where we're at as far as future sewer development, as far as the commissioners are concerned? Is there anything going on about that?
Not that I want to talk with these folks about this.
Yeah, it's a big problem all throughout Indiana, where development is behind, is being, it's just going away because we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the water or the sewer. A lot of time what happens is package plants get installed and water tanks, you know, just temporarily to do this. And I think the, the state's going to come down on those situations and, and also the FDA. But it's really thwarting a lot of development, and I, I think it's, so there's a proper way to get out in front of it, and I'd like to see us get out in front of it so that we can develop some infrastructure and also obtain some state funding. So are you looking into any of those things? Okay. I just had to ask.
Any other questions? Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, man.
We have to approve it.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I make a motion to approve the Johnson County Redevelopment Commission twenty-twenty-three annual report.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Dear, a second by John Eddy.
Ryan Deere?
Aye.
John Myers?
Aye.
Aye.
Camel Burton?
Aye.
John Mallards?
Aye.
John Dipper's?
Aye.
Paul and Grace Moore?
Aye.
Okay, on to item number two. We have a, a new software proposal for Johnson County, and this is going to be presented by a company called ClearGov. Several of us have been working with this gentleman for a couple of weeks via email. So I will turn it over to you if you will introduce yourself. Ryan?
Yes, absolutely, thank you very much, Councilwoman Burton. My name is Ryan Wilson, I work here at ClearGov, I'm a senior solutions advisor. And today, what I want to do is maybe first give you guys just a quick overview of exactly what it is ClearGov does, types of communities we work with, and some insight on some of the conversations I've had with Elizabeth, with the deputy auditor, Amy, and with Councilwoman Burton. From there, after giving you that overview, they felt it would make sense to be able to walk you through a, a quick demonstration of how the software would be used, both in the auditor's office, a little bit for how department heads would be able to use this, as well as how can the council and commissioners also use this tool to be kept up to date on the budget? So Councilwoman Burton, or, you know, if the auditor, if, if either of you have anything else you want to add before I get started?
I personally would like for, to wait for you just to, you've answered all my questions. So hopefully, your presentation will bring out those questions and, and answer any additional proposed by this board, so. I don't know.
Excellent.
Elizabeth, do you have anything?
Yep, looks like we're ready to go.
All right, well, I will share my screen, so if you could turn your attention to the screen. And I just want to ensure that everybody can see this, okay, ClearGov?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. So like I mentioned, we'll start with the quick two-minute overview, and then I can dive into a little bit of how the tool actually works. But in my conversations with first Elizabeth, Amy, Councilwoman Burton, but also, ClearGov is the leading provider of budget software for local government across the country. And in our conversations, both with Johnson County as well as other counties, we've learned that a lot of folks, when they build the budget, there is a lot of spreadsheets that is taking place. Spreadsheets, printed out papers, forms, and with that, it can be very difficult to manage the process itself, understand what the costs are, what, you know, if we were to change the cost of living adjustment, compare that to three to four percent for personnel costs, what is that outcome going to be? And with the tools you have today, you know, the process in place may be fine, but tools like Excel, like paper forms, can just be very scattered and, and tedious to use. And so we're really hearing across the board that counties are looking to modernize. However, most tools, most vendors in this space are typically focused on the state agencies, large corporations, federal agencies, or maybe the Indianapolises of the world. And what I mean by that is there might be tools out there, but most of them focus on extremely large, you know, multi-billion dollar agencies. And because of that, it's just way too time-consuming to implement, or too many features than you might actually need, or just way too expensive. So that's where ClearGov comes into play. Our company, we create easy-to-use software to help local government budget better, and we only work with local governments. So we don't work with state or federal, we don't work with corporations, we are hyper-focused on local governments. In our system, we are endorsed by the National Association of Counties, NACO. So they took a look at, you know, what are the tools that are out there to help counties? They said, ClearGov, we endorse you exclusively as, as kind of the best tool on the market. But we would serve as a complement to the current accounting system that you're using today. And per Councilwoman Burton's suggestion, I had a meeting yesterday with Andy Lau of Lau and Associates, and had a conversation with Sean Lau about can our system work, how would it work, and is there any, you know, potential kind of partnership? So we work well with that system, we're able to get the data out of there, and then it would be reflected in the ClearGov tool. So ClearGov would be the world in which the auditor's office, in which department heads when making requests, and, and which council would be able to review the requests in a very user-friendly format. ClearGov's a world in which the county would live when building the budget. And then your day-to-day, all of the things that you currently do in Lau, that continues to be done in Lau, but for budgeting, that's done in ClearGov. So we're easy to get up and running, we'll actually work, you'll have a, a former government CFO that works for ClearGov, assigned to Johnson County, that helps guide the auditor's office to get the data in the system, we'll actually map that data out for you. We're user-friendly, not just for auditor, but for the department heads and for the council members that are reading the budget, and even citizens who might be interested. We connect well back to Lau, and we are affordable. But this is specifically what ClearGov has to offer, we are a budget cycle management suite. And basically, we break it into a few components, but listening to Johnson County and what, what y'all's needs are, we really learned that building out the budget specifically, calculating personnel costs, getting requests in for the budget, as well as having a, a really professional-looking document to give to commission, to give to council, and to even put on your website, those would be kind of the two main areas that we could see the most usage. So from here, I'll walk you through a little bit of how the tool works, and then open the floor for any questions. So I'll start off here, ClearGov, our solution, we are cloud-based. So essentially, what that means is when the auditor's office or anybody is ready to work on the budget, they could log in from anywhere using their web browser. And from here, our team would have mapped out basically a recreation of your chart of accounts, and this is going to allow the county to put together a forecast of the budget that's extremely accurate. So we'll go ahead and get started here with personnel budgeting. And I think it's, you know, I, I've been on this meeting from the start, and, and even the conversations that y'all have had today around, you know, what are the costs going to be around different individuals? What would happen if we increased longevity pay? What would happen if we increased the cost of living adjustment? Our system's going to give you the ability to run a model around your employees and then run several scenarios comparing one to another, saying, you know, what would happen if we were to increase salaries? If we were to include new employees? So you'll notice here, we can visually see not just next year's costs for the budget for our personnel costs, but as we're running scenarios, I'm getting a multi-year forecast of, you know, if we did add a new inspector, how does that impact the budget for years to come? Not just for wages, but also incorporating any type of additional pays or benefits that would be associated with a new employee. So here, we're able to visually see that. Down below, this is where the auditor's office, whether they're in a meeting doing this, whether this is something that, you know, as they, they lead up to that meeting, we are able to adjust all the way from a, you know, overall level, I went all the way down to an employee level within the sheriff's office, what a cost of living adjustment would look like. So if you guys are in the middle of building the budget and you want to say, look, let's just quickly see what's a three percent COLA going to look like? Close the scenario, and then show me what a four percent COLA looks like for our employees this year? It's just as easy as inputting four, and then I can see all the way down to the individual level, I can see how that impacts any ad pays or benefits, and then I can easily see that multi-year forecast communicated to me. So you're, you're able to get a very accurate representation and make those changes on the fly without having to worry about formulas breaking or, you know, data getting lost in the mix. We mentioned benefits and ad pays, we're also going to run a model around what are your employees' health insurance costs? What's that cost going to be to, you know, the county? What is social security, Medicare? So all of those kind of additional pays that sometimes get overlooked in the budget process will be built into this model. And you're able to say, you know, if health insurance were to increase, you know, it typically does three or four percent, how does that impact our multi-year forecast here, and what's the cost going to be? New position requests, those are all going to be listed in one place. And it's funny, I had assistant inspector here as one of my examples. You can choose to include or exclude this new position in this scenario, immediately see the impacts of the budget, and even change the proposed start date. So if we're budgeting, you know, in Q4, we're, we're towards the end of the year, we might know that a new position would be very difficult to fill on January first. Maybe it's more accurate that we would fill that position by March first or April one. So you could actually come in and change that proposed start date, and our system would automatically prorate the wages for the county. So you're able to see every single dollar saved in the budget if you weren't paying an individual for three months out of the year. So as I mentioned, you're able to build multiple scenarios. We're keeping everything in one hub, so for attachments, comments, all of that can be right here. And kind of what I'm showing you here is a little bit of how maybe a power user like the auditor could use this. Obviously, the same way I'm doing now, they could put those scenarios up on the screen. But there's also a really great way to simplify this data into charts and graphs, visuals, to really make it easy for council, for, you know, anyone who's asking to break down this scenario, to break down this by department, and give a very clear indication of, based off of the things that we're, we're looking at here, what's that, what's that going to look like in a very easy-to-understand format? So that's a little bit of the personnel data. We also have a, a tool that basically recreates a master spreadsheet and gives you a very user-friendly way to track. A, you can see here, do we have a balanced budget? And as I pull up the worksheet, what are historical budget to actuals, broken down for me, kind of in this visualized format here? So if I've been, if we've had an account or a line item in our budget that's been over-budget year over year over year, this is going to give a visual indication, not just to council and auditors, but for that department head that's making requests, they'd be able to come in here, input their requests, but easily see, even if they don't have an accounting background, hey, I'm showing up in the red, I've been over-budget for the past five years, maybe I need to budget a little bit more in this expense, or maybe I can visually see this and I need to budget a little bit less. But the auditor is able to assign sections or chunks of the budget, giving them, giving department heads a requestor access, giving council read-only access, where council can make comments if they would like, and department heads can come in and make their requests that then would have to go through an approval process. But the nice thing is, everything is stored in one place, so you don't have printed spreadsheets, or if you have turnover and you have somebody new in a, a position, they're not having to track down, you know, why? You know, why are we spending ten thousand dollars every year on printing and duplication? With ClearGov, they'd be able to break down any line items, so if I were to come into printing and duplication. They could add notes or even add what we call sub line item detail. Breaking down that line item into different sub accounts, giving council an exact representation of the why behind that. So for printing and duplication, maybe we're purchasing some new printers. And maybe we're we're purchasing some some copy paper, right? And so, you know, as we fill up this line item here, this fifteen hundred dollar line item. They could say, well, we actually are purchasing two different printers, they cost five hundred a piece. And we're just gonna put, you know, a a line item here for that that cost of paper. Um, and so you guys are able to see, here's the why behind that. And if we have, if we're going into a new year, well, we just purchased printers last year, we can now see that in one location. That's telling me I might not need to to make that uh that same request in a future year. So really increasing the accuracy, making it easier to manage the budget in one place, allowing y'all to view it. Once this data is done, we're able to put this back into Lau. And we're also able to provide a really nice report, not only for constituents who might be interested in seeing the budget. Uh, but also for council. So I have this um example here, this is a budget document, a budget presentation. That was automatically built through ClearGov system and it generates a cover page, a table of contents. And then a a lot of this data is is, you know, there's some things like, you know, the history of the county that you can input yourself. But when we get into the financial breakdown, all of that data is automatically generated for you. So instead of just showing you this in maybe an Excel spreadsheet, uh, we'll still have that traditional spreadsheet view. But we can give you the trends, we can give you the breakdown in in a very easy to understand format. So this is one way to view it in this printed view, we also give you an online option. So that same data can be viewed and and displayed in an online budget document. This is something, once again, you could pull up on your computer or your iPad as you're reviewing the budget. And uh, we do see a lot of counties put this on their website, so once the budget's published, it's a very simple way, a very understandable way. For uh the community to better understand the budget. So uh, you guys have a proposal in front of you that goes over a little bit more of this in detail, that kind of a breakdown, but. Um, that's really what I had to kind of walk you through of how this tool would be able to work for Johnson County. Um, you know, I'll open the floor up for any questions.
Thank you, Ryan, that's that was very informative. So uh, I'm sure people have different questions, so if you wanna go first.
Yes. My first question is, how does it, can you pull data out of this to interface with other softwares?
Absolutely, yep, so um, we had that meeting with uh Andy and Sean Lau yesterday to. Uh, ensure that we could do that, but ClearGov works with every accounting system on the planet. We do that through a simple import export model, where we need a report from Lau, that is your current accounting system. Our team would then take that data reflected in the system, and then when you're done, simply click a button to uh import that back into the the. Format that Lau would need to interface with that, so it's not like a direct integration, which would. Be, you know, tens and tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars sometimes to implement those and they're they constantly break. So we find that especially for budget data, this um import export model. Uh, is the most effective way to to get the data in and out.
There there's this new thing called AI and it's marvelous.
Okay.
So I wanted to, if I wanted to pull something out, some data out, and I wanted to plug it in to co-pilot.
Yeah, so let me show you how you would do that, so um as you're working on the budget. At any point, we can grab data, extrapolate data out of this tool using this report builder. Um, and i- if you are familiar with co-pilot using those AI tools. They are able to, you are able to take this, so here we have, and and this is just a sample report, we can really slice and dice the data to make. And show and categorize anything that we need, but we're able to export this into a CSV, which uh. AI, ChatGPT can actually read that CSV file and then, you know, do with that what you will in the in the AI tool. So that would be a good way to get it out, we've also incorporated AI into the tool itself. Um, so if you look into some of these budget documents, um, kind of the the analysis around the figures. Uh, I don't think this example I pulled up, oh, actually here, this narrative, the analysis is being generated using AI. We call it first draft, we would like the editor of this document to come in behind it, make sure what it says makes sense. But it actually does have the ability to utilize AI to even write narrative around the budget for you.
You're on top of it.
I I have a couple of questions and only thing I know about co-pilots, the guy that's flying the plane. But uh, when the council's working on this, uh, we sometimes. Well, we don't have the ability, I know of right this moment in time, that we're linked to the iPads. So this could be linked to our iPads.
It's a cloud, so you'll be able to get on through any internet.
Yeah, so on your iPad, uh, you likely have an app called Safari or Google Chrome and then you just type in ClearGov dot com. Um, I imagine that Elizabeth would be kind of our main point of contact, so she would set you up with a user. Work with us to set up a user for council and say, okay, they're able to see this budget from this timeframe. And here's the permissions that they have, so you'd be able to get in, have that view only access. Um, she can assign you the ability to have a comment field, so you can have comments back and forth within the tool. So that you're able to review the budget in a very simple format prior to any meetings.
All right, so the permissions you were talking about and what John T was asking about. Was that if we wanted to do something to see what something would do. We wouldn't impact the actual. Numbers, it would just be, we could play with those numbers to see the scenarios. Under the, I'm assuming there would have to be some training and if this is coming up for our May budgeting, then it's all gonna be pretty quick, but uh. You know, we wouldn't be invalidating or changing your numbers, so if I went to see what. A five percent increase did as opposed to a four percent increase, there's some kind of way I could do this, is that what I understand?
My question was, is there anything I can do when Amy would give me a new program? Is there anything I can do to hurt this, change it or make it nonfixable? You cannot inter read only, you can do all of the what-if scenarios, but you're not gonna change, she's not gonna give you the authority. To change anything that's written in stone.
All right, and so and then the other thing is what some of us older ones have done and even some of the younger ones with. When we've always had the big budget books that were eight inches tall, you know, that's where we could write in information, so I'm understanding that we could. Go to our iPads and write in information during budget time, is that correct?
That is correct, you can do it uh through your iPad using, you know, any line item that you might be reviewing. Uh, there'll be a simple comment field, so if I come back over here to the worksheet, I can just quickly show you. Over here under actions, in this additional infield info, we see this comment field and so.
And that comment would still be, I would, I would still retain that comment on my. Portion of it or my access of it.
Correct, so this comment is a, doesn't impact the budget, um, and. Anybody who has access to this portion of the budget would see who made the comment and when, and it'll be noted by a user.
Okay, what I might, what what I want to try and clarify is that many of us on the paper budgets would write. Notes to ourself to ask a question at budget time, which would be our personal note, not a public note.
Hmm, so none of this, none of these comments are public, they're only able to be viewed. By internal users of ClearGov, you choose what goes public and that wouldn't be that. Um, so this would be, um, currently, if you have access to comments, you can see all of the comments, we don't have like. Unique comments to just one individual, but this would not be publicly available information. A second point I wanna make though, that could solve for this and maybe not even change your current process if you wouldn't want it to, um, is I. ClearGov, we're working with over a thousand local governments across the country. And we realize that there are gonna be some uh council members and department heads that just prefer the old fashioned. Pen and paper, prefer an Excel spreadsheet. And we really do a good job at keeping one foot in the old and one foot in the new. So you're able to definitely modernize with everything I've shown you here, but at any point, we can take this exact data, print it out in a PDF. And you can write that down, put your notes there, have that conversation, and then, like I mentioned, if there needs to be a change. Somebody like the auditor could come in and and make that official change in the budget.
And then my final question is of Pam, that if we approve this expenditure, we're on such a short timeframe, we're less than a month away from our. Or a month and a week from our first budget hearing, and not hearing, our first budget discussion, which is May thirteenth. So how are we gonna get this in place for them and for us with training and everything else, or is it possible to do that by May thirteenth?
I'll let Ryan answer that because the the auditor's office has already discussed it, so.
Yeah, absolutely, um, assuming this is approved and and signed off on tonight, we would overnight start working on your data. Make sure this is up and running, I I will say, you know. Um, what we see a lot of folks do is run their first time with ClearGov, run somewhat of a hybrid model. Where they're definitely doing the information in ClearGov, but still having a little bit of. The pen and paper, the the backup there, so that they can run the two side by side, um, and kind of see. Okay, for next year, when we do maybe like a fuller launch of this, we use all of the features and functions, what are the things that we learned about it? So you can definitely use ClearGov for the, you know, full budget process, um, but I do think it's a best practice to maybe. Have somewhat of of a pilot year to really get used to it.
Uh, Ryan, I I do wanna say, and I have not looked at the final agreement. But obviously, this is going to be subject to legal and approval. But I also know that I had expressed to you earlier my concerns over doing this so quickly. And you had indicated that you would put a ninety day clause in there. Can you explain that to the council as to uh what happens in that ninety days if suddenly we decide, oh no, this is not what they represented? We don't want this, give us our money back.
Yeah, absolutely, and let me triple check, I I had to just update it for my conversation with uh. Elizabeth, so I'll need to send you, cause I I started a new template, so I'll need to send you a new one, we're under customer satisfaction guarantee. It's a ninety day opt out, um, but to answer that question, within ninety days, uh, if you guys feel like. What what we showed was misrepresented, you're not able to get the value out of it, you didn't think it was a good fit, you would be able to get a full refund. From your setup and annual investment that you would have paid us.
Thank you, um, and I can't, I, one of the things I thought of was. And Angel Elizabeth one may want to uh touch on this, but the um. Removing the margin of error, not that everyone hasn't done a great job, but we are humans, so. Uh, am am I correct to believe that by doing it this way and taking our data from our current financial systems? That our margin of error will be reduced significantly?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, through the, you know, building out the personnel budget, being able to calculate down to that specific employee level. Any changes, any COLAs coming in, saying, you know, we're not just gonna accept, I mean, it's up to you on how y'all wanna do this, but. We see a lot of our clients say, we're not just gonna accept a ten thousand dollar blanket statement for supplies, you gotta put in a no. You gotta break down that justification so that we can truly see what's, what is being requested and what's absolutely necessary in the budget. Reducing that margin of error to, you know, at the end of the day, a budget's still a forecast, but we wanna get that forecast. Not a ten to twenty percent margin of error, we wanna get that down to one to two percent.
Correct, um, and I also wanted to tell everyone up here, if you wanna look at it, Amy gave us a printout, a ledger. On the amount of money that we had currently have in our budget, which is sufficient. And we do have an outstanding bill that we just received from Wagner, Irwin and Shealy for almost sixteen hundred dollars. So even with those expenses, uh, and the amount that we have budgeted, I think we will be fine. Yes, pass this down if everybody wants to look at it, have any additional questions there. Um, one other thing that, and I already know the answer because I've already drilled you on this, but. Support and training is very important, um, not only for this body, but for the auditor's office as well. And I'm going to assume that that's going to be readily available. And not something leave a message or put your request in and someone will get back with you, this is going to be. Hands on, especially since our intent is to use it so close to this next budget cycle. So I guess I just wanna hear you assure me that uh you're gonna have their back and be there for them.
Absolutely, yeah, I I'm not the person specifically that would be training you, but we have a a wealth of. Training resources as well as personalized one-on-one trainings that we will supply for you, for council, for departments. Um, and then the, as you're setting up, you'll be assigned an implementation manager. That is basically quarterbacking, saying, okay, what are our deadlines, when do we need this by? And letting you know, here's all of the deadlines that we would need this to be done by to reach your deadline. So you have somebody working with you dedicated to your account, that you can call with any questions, you can email with any questions, as well as setting up those personalized trainings.
Okay, and Elizabeth would like your wife's name and your personal cellphone. Oh, you have my cellphone already, okay.
She's already got my cellphone.
Documents here for everyone to review, so does anyone have any questions, Mr. Dittmers, do you have anything?
I do, um, uh, thanks, Ryan, it's really informative and I think this kind of thing is where we need to be heading. I think you answered one of my questions, and that's an implementation schedule. Um, I, how long, and this may not be a question for you, but maybe for anybody else can answer. How long have we known about this since this was introduced to someone here in the county versus it showing up here?
The minute I received the email, first of all, when he indicates, they're every, oh, excuse me, that they're everywhere. They're in one county in Indiana, and I believe that's Scott County, which is a very small county. So that was a red flag for me, that's why I started digging in, but the minute that uh Elizabeth notified, and Amy notified me of. Take a look at this, see what you think, this is phenomenal, I made email contact the next day, the day after. And the emails have been going back and forth since.
When?
Um.
Thirty days, sixty days?
Month ago, maybe, month ago, and I'm not sure how, did you hear about ClearView? Our, yeah, ClearGov at conference, or how were you guys notified about them? How'd you find out about us, Ryan?
Um, so we have been to the AIC conference, I believe it's it's called, we were there the last couple of years. Um, we learned about you guys through our partnership at NACO, the National Association of Counties. I've been here with the company for coming on five years in April, uh, just next week actually. Um, but recently was assigned to to help flourish this partnership in Indiana. So that's why we only have one, cause I've been basically just working here since uh January in the state alone. Um, but I I learned about you guys from a list that I received from the National Association of Counties through that, through that partnership.
What else are you, are you in other states?
We are in forty-nine of the fifty states, so if you know anybody in South Dakota.
And you're located in Massachusetts, is that right? Who are you?
I am personally located in Massachusetts, that's where our company is headquartered, um, but we have individuals. Uh, we have individuals that live, I believe, in Indiana, we have individuals that live basically in every state, our entire company is remote.
Well, it's a good thing you work from Connecticut.
Yeah.
Ryan, um, you say you don't work with state or federal agencies, you just do locals, correct?
That is correct.
What's your largest agency? How how big is it?
Well, when you have twelve hundred plus customers, you're gonna have a very wide kind of breadth of people that you serve. I would say our largest agency, I believe, is Contra Costa County in California, I think their budget's like seven billion. But we have customers that have budgets as small as two million. But we have customers that have budgets as small as $2 million overall. I think what's important is taking the mean or maybe the median of our budget, which is anywhere from, you know, I'd say $100 million in total law funds budget to somewhere around $500 million. That's kind of our sweet spot.
Okay.
Amy, Elizabeth, do you have anything you want to add? Anything you want to ask in support of and rejection of, anything you want to let us know? Amy, what are your thoughts on the needs of this council approaching your office, the auditor's office, for what if we did this? Or what if we did that? Or if we changed this? Or how many people last year did their budgets roll back over? And they really don't need that $5,000 for paper, but they keep asking for it again. How many, how much of that time is this going to eliminate? Will we be able to do that stuff for, as I see, we'll be able to do that for ourselves? So I guess I want to hear from you, since you're going to be, you know, you along with Elizabeth are going to be the guiding person on this.
I mean, I think it'll be beneficial for everyone overall, council, the department heads.
That's days and days worth of work.
And what will be the impact on department heads and elected officials as they prepare their budget this year, since we have a timeline in place?
I don't know exactly, but I mean, currently with Lao, I mean, I'm sure they use their own spreadsheet or Excel or pen and paper and give the budget, give the final numbers, and it's put to budget projection now. So I think this would save them time and they would have their history in there all in one place. And if they want to do their own scenarios, they can do that instead of using different programs. I don't think he showed you, but like you can upload things on here, notes. And like there's turnover of heads or department officials. I'll kind of see why something was done in the previous years. Just looking at that, that issue's there. Also breaking access to anything that they uploaded to that program to help support their requests.
Ryan, I've got a question. Timing on, how long would it take to basically get the database in place? And what's the resource requirement? And what would that initial timeline look like to get this thing on the T ready to hit?
Yeah, so that question is answered primarily based off of how quick can we get those reports from the auditor's office? So we see, we definitely see a range, anywhere from a month to several months. But that range is totally based off of, one, when can we, you know, get y'all signed on? So you said, yes, we're going to commit to this, we're going to be a client. And then from there, we need certain exports. And we know exactly which ones those are from Lao. But we need those exports and a lot of our clients just sometimes wait weeks to get those to us. It might take 15, 20 minutes to find them, to run them and to send them. But getting those right away was extremely important. And then from there, our team might have a couple of questions that say, hey, we noticed this account that had a number assigned to it, and then we haven't seen this number anywhere else in the budget. Can you let us know why that is? So any kind of quick emails or questions that our team has is going to be crucial in getting y'all up and running in around a month or two, you know, getting it y'all up and running by May, so.
Follow up on John's point there, that we have a process in place this year that is modifying and hopefully improving our budget process that on May 13th, on May 6th, we will receive Mike Reuters' budget analysis. May 13th, he'll be here 4:30 to discuss that. And then May 13th, that evening, we will be discussing our suggestion, or not our suggestions and not our recommendations, but our, at least I believe, our affirmative expectations of the budget. And then we're asking for them to have them to you. I don't have that form in front of me right at the moment. They're getting to you, those to you by the, I believe, the middle of July. And then we would have informal budget workshops in the middle of August. So Amy, will all this meet that timeline with them?
That's one reason we, I requested that they work hand in hand with Lao and with the auditor's office before we ever started this. And we went on the assumption that we could use it, was to make sure all the pieces were set. They're not working together yet, but they're, all of the pieces of the puzzle are here waiting to interconnect. And everyone has talked and said, yes, we could make this happen. But obviously.
Well, I heard him say something about one to two months, that's why it was.
Well, that's, he can only work with the information he get, he's given. And he's basing it the fact, we will give him what he needs when he needs it. So will allow, so he can't control it if he didn't get it.
Right.
So I believe, is that correct, Ryan?
Yes.
Okay.
I can absolutely understand the excitement about this and the fact we need to do something like this, whether it's this or something like this. This feels rushed to me for some reason. And I don't know what any kind of cost comparison is. I don't know what a vendor comparison is. So to do this kind of with a 30 day head start to do an analysis and absolutely trust everybody's judgment that this is going to be a good thing. And like I said, there's this and this looks great or something like this. It needs to be done. We're antiquated on how we're going through the budgeting process. I get that. But I'm struggling with the fact that, I don't feel like I have enough information on which to make a decision because we don't have anything to compare to. And it feels to me like maybe, how should I say it? Maybe this is a 26 budget issue, not a 25, so that we can have the time to go through a thoughtful line of thinking, if you will, to make sure that we understand exactly what we're doing. A, B, we have cost comparisons. It's not an end of the world cost, I guess, from that standpoint. But it's still, I think we have a duty to go through that, through that piece. So that's sort of where my mind's going on this. While being awfully excited about what Ryan has to say and what he's offering. It's a neat deal.
So what would be the next step in your mind's eye, Ryan?
And, well, if you guys vote to appropriate funds for ClearGov, the next step would, we would need the signed service order. And then we would immediately set up an implementation kickoff call with the auditor's office where we explain, we first would ask, what are your deadlines? What's your budget calendar? Let's confirm what we think versus what, you know, the reality of all of these points. We would then tell you the exports we need from Lao. And then we would get that information from you. And then with the auditor's office, we'd say, here's how we've mapped your data in the system. Once it's mapped, does it look okay? And to the councilman's point, I absolutely understand. I think that's why we have done a couple of things in the way that we've structured this contract. First, we have offered that 90 day opt out within the first 90 days. If you feel like we're not doing what we promised. And not only that, let's say you do kind of stick with us through the 90 days. We have, it's a three-year contract. But written in the contract says that this is subject to annual council appropriations. So if you go through year one, you know, you liked it enough to stay there three months, but you felt like it wasn't a good fit, you guys are not locked in to renewing with us. We'd love for you to. I think you're going to love it. I think it's going to be a great fit for the county. But we have put some of those things in place so that you're not, you know, locked in.
Does this require commissioner approval and signature?
Yeah, I think this is kind of like how we handled the Wagner situation. I've yet to see the contract, so I do need to have that sent to me.
So would the next step be in two weeks? If we, John Dittmers, I'm not going against you on this. I'm thinking of the fast track.
Feel free.
You know, the fast track versus the presented the other track, so.
Yeah, so if y'all want to move forward with this, then we just add it to commissioner, someone from council, I guess in conjunction with the auditor present. And then either they would approve it or just consent to council president executing the contract once we've hammered out all the legal issues, if there are any, and they get that moving.
Yeah, we, the council put this budget, this number in budget a year or two, though?
Last year, $90,000, yeah.
Yeah, so we had an intent to do something like this at that point in time. So. I'm forward with moving ahead as long as you don't box us in, Ryan. I know you're in business to sell a product, but it's kind of like a new product. And for us, it's very big. I mean, we need it or something like it. That's, that's where all.
Do you mind if I, just can you clarify? When you said, don't box us in, can you just clarify what that means?
Yeah, contractually. I don't know about a three-year contract. This is the first time we've heard it tonight. And then in effect, what we're doing is we're moving forward with a three-year contract if we go forward tonight.
There was a one-year opt out.
Right.
After your 90 days, if you still want to keep it, it's a three-year contract. But if the council doesn't appropriate funds at the end of one year, then it's null and void. Now that's Adam.
It would be pending legal review to make sure that's in there. But yeah, we do get the occasional contract where the term may be three years, but then it has subject to council preparation. So if that happens, then it would trigger an early termination of the contract. So do they not have a demonstration site? Most software services that we.
Good question.
Did they have a demo where we get some department heads on there? With Write Stuff, we had a big presentation that Mrs. Burton did as the auditor. They got all the department heads in their room and everybody committed to being on board before we went. And it's been a wonderful change, and I think this would be a similar.
Is there a demonstration site, Ryan, that you're aware of, that people could go in? A read only, even if it was another county? Where some of our department heads could go in and look?
We don't have demo sites of the back office per se. I mean, I'm happy to give a demo to your department heads or provide a video that they can watch of this. I think.
I think we're talking about more hands-on demo.
Whereas the service always has, I mean, that's a pretty standard thing, have a demo.
Like more of a hands-on where they can log into.
Yeah, like I mentioned, that's, that's kind of where that 90 day opt out, that cancellation option comes into play. So if you're using it, if, you know, they're looking at that, but we don't have a demo site.
So what he's saying is once the 90 day, once it happens, you'll have that 90 days to go in and try and look, and that will be part of the, do we want this or do we not? So I think the answer is no, they don't have a live site.
We don't, we don't have a live hands-on demo.
You can bring something in, but we don't have a live site.
Okay, and that 90 day out, did I hear something about refund?
You did.
Did I misunderstand then?
No, a full refund.
Yes, a full refund, 90 days to try the product. If we're not happy or it's been misrepresented or whatever. But of course, this is all subject to legal reading that agreement, but yes.
We would pay it upfront, and then if we weren't satisfied by the vote of the council, then we would get a refund. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I mean, you don't hear that word.
Yes, but I think the only reason anybody is leery because Adam hasn't looked at it yet. So we got to see that in writing first, but yes, that's what they are saying.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure Adam looks at it. I think I do, I want you guys to go through the process and do everything you need to do. And don't want, I definitely don't want y'all to feel like I'm rushing the county by any means. Given that you do want to start using this within a month, that is a, that is a quicker timeline for sure. And, you know, if this is, you know, goes through commissioner, legal review, there might be a scenario where if this isn't approved to maybe end of April or beginning of May, we would have to push out that starting point to maybe June or July, depending on how long the additional steps take from here, which I'm happy to do. I just want to be extremely clear on, we do need some runway from when we get.
His meeting is in two weeks, correct? So two weeks would be the, the green light?
Sure. So if it's, if it's greenlit in two weeks, then yes, I would say we could have something in by, you know, end of May.
And John addresses your issue about the expenditure of the cost, that if we don't like it, we don't pay for it. If we like it, we pay for it.
Not really. My, my point would be, let's get it right the first time. And I think that what I don't know is, and John, you mentioned a minute ago, this has been budgeted before. Why didn't we not proceed with doing something at that time when it was budgeted?
We tried. The Personnel Committee would have been the first step.
The $90,000 that was budgeted in professional services. It's broad ranging for all professional services, including WIS and DISC and everything.
There was a product like this last year? I didn't think there was.
That money was intended to, intended originally for WIS. If we went with them as consultants.
That's what I thought.
But then we just.
That wasn't my understanding. I, you know, I know WIS is a, I'm sorry. I need to back away from this just for a bit.
Well, the $90,000 was put in there for professional services. I'll just clarify that. And those professional services were broad reaching for consideration. And we're not going down that route as far as personnel. So now it is for all other contractual services, including WIS.
Okay, fair point. Ryan, and this may be an unfair question, so I'll preface it with that. But how do we get around the bend on the fact that we have nothing to compare this to from a cost perspective? I mean, I don't know if it's a good deal, bad deal, right down the fairway deal. I don't know what this, what this is. So how would we get a feel for that? Or is that a question for somebody else here? Somebody ought to be able to answer that, I would think.
So if the plan is to get this approved in two weeks, I would recommend, right, let's say council says, let's take this to commissioners. And in between, I would point you to our main competitor, OpenGov. I would ask that you not share what we quoted you, but I am competent enough to point you the, you talk about not boxing you or trying to sell you something. Like pointing you to our main competitor is probably the number one no-no. But I want to make sure you guys feel good about what this is. So what I would recommend is, if you approve it today, we, in two weeks, we're going to get this, you know, approved by commission. You set up a demo with OpenGov, you get a quote from them. And if the quote is similar or significantly less, which I'm confident it won't be, but if it is, then you put it on pause and table this for a later meeting to where you can compare the two. If it's, you know, double, triple, quadruple, well, then you kind of know, well, why don't we try out the option where it's affordable? We're giving you guys a discount because you're going to be one of our first counties in Indiana. We're going to give you white glove treatment because I selfishly want Johnson County to be the best county that, I mean, Councilwoman Burton, and I know this, Johnson County is a leader in Indiana. We are already finding some success, you know, early. But I want this to be the best state in the country for ClearGov. And it's going to start with you guys loving us. So that's what I'm going to make sure our company does for you. And as far as making you feel better about, are you kind of getting a bad deal? I would say ask for a number from our main competitor.
Thanks for that transparency.
Have you talked to their main competitor or done anything with them at all?
Now, this is going to come out of the council budget every year?
Yeah.
So I, I'm going to move ahead here a little bit. I think I'm just going to lay something out on the table. I think that we could approve this tonight in the sense that we're. I think that we could approve this tonight in the sense that we're placing it in the auditor's hands. She has this, and now she can go out and she can do a comparison in that two-week period. And if it comes back that it's the right thing to do monetarily, I think we're all on the same page that it's what we need as far as program. And then she has that option, and if she finds something that's lower, we pull back on the reins, we don't go to commissioners, and we go back to square one.
But Pam, you want us to approve the appropriation this evening, so things are in place.
So Adam, this is where I guess you'll need to come in. I'm thinking, first of all, I want to comment on something Ryan said a minute ago, and I don't want to speak out of school here, and this may be political, but he is correct. Johnson County is usually cutting edge on everything. There are counties bigger than us, but normally Johnson County's out there in the front, running on new products and on, on, on the new vendors and the finance and things. So is Lau, being a prominent vendor in the state of Indiana. So I think what Ryan is thinking, if I were in his shoes, I would be thinking, if I can do this for Johnson County, and I can make them happy, and I can work with the number one vendor for finances in the state of Indiana, and I can make them happy, and I've got ninety other counties who isn't using this, and there's only a couple other competitors out of state, they're going to be coming right in behind that. So that's my guess, is yeah, we can look at it as a guinea pig, and we've got that ninety-day window, but I do think that what he is saying at the white glove treatment, if we can make this work in Johnson County, and we're going to do everything we can to make it work, then it's going to cut the path for other counties in front of us. So it, it's, I think it would behoove them to give us all the information we needed and to give us every option that we need. You know, this thing could fall flat on its face, and I'll be one of the biggest ones to have to take that responsibility. But with what I've discovered and what I've seen and everything here tonight, I think we need to follow through on, but I think we need to approve it, subject to legal review and commissioners' approval.
I presume we got references.
Can we talk to Scott County?
Yeah.
I, I have.
Oh, you have?
I've talked to Scott County. There is a video, she actually videoed her support for this company and what all it's done for their county, but you have to keep in mind, Scott County's a very small.
Can we find a pure county from state?
No, I'm with you. I mean, we get this tonight, first we see, I'm going to get a little presentation, I think we're trying to rush it. I agree. And. It sounds good.
I don't know, but a year is a rush. What's that old saying about millstone and government?
A year of rush.
They, they turn, the stone turns very slowly, but grinds ever so fine.
We've been grinding every so fine for a while.
Turn this on a dime, though. So it's sort of like somewhere in between.
Right.
You know, these people are turning it on the dime because they've got AI. They're on the cutting edge.
Okay, well, unless there's any further discussion, I would move that if there's going to be a motion, you make a motion or a suggestion of some sort of, you know, do you want to move forward? You know, what, what, you know, I think I've expressed my, my thoughts, so I need someone else to take the lead on how they want to move forward.
So may I make a motion?
Is that appropriate?
Yes, just to answer Councilwoman Burton's question, if you are going to, if the motion is to move forward, you'd appropriate the money pending legal review and then ultimately.
Commissioners.
Yeah, so that would be how, how this would play, whether that's.
What is the amount?
I'm just sorry, what?
What is the amount?
Just to clarify, you guys aren't past money.
Right.
Yeah, we're not appropriating anything, we're just going to spend it out of our line item that we have.
We're approving the expenditure.
Yeah.
So.
No, that is true.
Yeah, we're approving the expenditure. It's that we have the budget item, but we're approving the expenditure.
So are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion either way, yes.
I'd like to make the motion to move forward with tonight's presentation. And having the auditor's office in control of further information regarding this company, and if they are satisfied that this program is the best program, I'd like to then approach the commissioner, have them then approach the commissioners pending legal. Wouldn't the council have to go to the commissioners with this, since it's coming out of our budget?
It would probably be best if, I mean, you could do it in conjunction with the auditor, but yeah, it would probably be best to have at least a member of council there with the auditor to present this.
Myself or one of us will be present to, if it goes that far, yes.
So is that motion adequate?
I think my understanding was move forward, the auditor to confirm it's what they want to do and goodbye, and then if it is, a member of council along with the auditor will then present to the commissioners.
And, and that contract, as I understand, and clarification of John's motion includes the ninety-day clause, and if we're not happy with it, we get a refund. That would be under contract.
That doesn't have to depart your motion, but.
Well, I mean, I mean.
Legal review, yeah, that's the legal review part.
Yeah.
So there is a motion on the floor, is that enough information for the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by JT, a second by John Dear.
Ron Dear.
My dear.
John Dear.
Yeah, you call me.
Don't forget to vote for your own.
Nothing runs like a deer.
They called me Pam Dear one night.
I know, I know.
You never know what Pam Dear call me.
And I have five Johns up here, okay, Amy, we're ready. I do need to note, I need to note for the record that Melinda Gressimar, councilwoman, left the meeting at seven oh six, so.
We don't need a recall now that.
Now that she's gone, so.
Pam, can you, can you ask for further discussion? I've got one.
Oh, yes, we do, yes, sir, go ahead. Anybody got further discussion?
Amy, you said, I realize funds are appropriated. To my knowledge, I have no idea what the cost of this is. Thirty. I don't.
It was in her memo.
I don't have a memo. The pack at the second page, third page. Both of them.
It's down here at the bottom.
Right.
And it was in Pam's and your memo?
Yes, yes, but he can look at it there.
Thirty.
The aggregate.
And what's our, what's our current?
Nine thousand, those two together.
No.
Sorry.
Next year or the next year.
Current balance.
I have that, that's what I passed around a minute ago.
Ninety thousand.
Thank you.
And then, I guess I had something as well. May I proceed?
Yes, you go ahead.
Not to further complicate the issue, but I think this is a fantastic program. I do agree with taking the time, the two weeks here to figure all that out. I'm definitely in support of it, however, ClearGov is a product of NACO, and NACO, my wife works for the Association of Indiana Counties, which is affiliate of NACO. And as of right now, the AIC is not sure whether, like with tracks and some other programs, they get some money from the program, but they're not sure whether or not they might get money if counties buy this program. And so since my wife works for the AIC and they might get money from it, I'm going to abstain from the vote. Now, Adam has gracefully, graciously done an analysis for me, and his opinion is there is no impropriety or anything, but just to be safe, I'm going to go ahead and abstain.
So. Any other questions? Anybody got anything else to say? We have a motion. Yeah, there it is, no wonder I couldn't find it. Did you want to see that?
Here we were, you said.
You were asking.
He, you asked about it. So we have a motion, first and a second on the floor, so. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Aye. This will pass.
Doesn't pass? Okay, so where do we go from here?
Well, if you want to, this is a good idea, and you want to continue to push this forward, I think potentially Councilman Myers' suggestion of the auditor reaching out to other counties or maybe a competitor to get some more information, and then you can take this back up next month, hopefully we'll have full counsel, and the vote may be different with Melinda here. I know she was in support of this, but she's not here to cast that vote, so.
Well, to Adam's point, my, my issue is more the presentation, and there's gaps in it as far as information is concerned. I'm all for it, believe me, I'm all for it.
Well, you've got, you can research it, you can continue to research all you want, I understand.
But I think from a presentation standpoint, it's got, I can research it, but everybody ought to be provided the same information, so we're all informed at the same level, is all I'm saying.
Did you have something you wanted to add as well? No, I'm sorry.
No.
In reference to that, with the moving forward, how does it impact the use for the 2025 budget? Since it wasn't.
Oh, I would think we would be dead in the water at this point till next year.
So we don't need it.
The commissioners would be a month from now, and without.
So we don't, we don't need, I mean.
We're back to status quo.
Okay, for 2025 budget.
It would give you additional time to schedule more of a demo where potentially other like the officials and department heads can attend that demo with ClearGov. I mean, it's not the worst thing to slow the roll on this, it gives you more time to be more thorough with buying.
One of the budget books sent out anyway.
They'll be in July this year. On that procedure that we approved.
July twenty-sixth.
So if.
June thirteen, budgets are due July twenty-sixth.
Would be available.
And then August twenty-third, by August twenty-third, you guys would add to the work sessions.
Yeah.
So if we approve this in, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I apologize. If we approve this in May, could it be ready by July twenty-sixth theoretically?
Probably not.
I don't know.
Early May, if it was approved in early May, May, whatever it is.
May thirteenth.
May thirteenth. Could it be available if it was planned properly by July twenty-sixth? Ryan?
When you say ready by July twenty-sixth, do you mean the budget is built and department head requests are ready, or are you saying that people are going to be working in the system by July twenty-sixth?
No, it'll be complete by July twenty-sixth, our initial draft by July twenty-sixth.
No, sir, I don't, I don't believe so.
I don't think so either, I think that would really be pushing it.
Yeah.
If you get more information, you can always call a special meeting as well.
I don't know that there's any more information to do other than bringing them coming in live, gathering the directors all together, and doing a live demo in front of all of the directors. I guess that's what we're talking about and.
Which pushes it to July twenty-five, July twenty-five, or next year, twenty-five or twenty-sixth?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think that it'd have to go out of, I would think so, it'd have to go out.
But John, you're looking for comparative, or you have something to validate the cost of this, regardless of what's appropriated now or not, we have nothing.
The statutes do not require that this cost point to do any kind of RFPs or bidding, to be clear. Obviously, if you want that, just so you can make a conscious vote for it, that's fine. The statutes do not require it.
Sound practice.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm just saying that at this price point, it's not requiring a statute.
Okay, Ryan, thank you very much. I'm not sure what the next step will be, but I'm sure Elizabeth will be getting in touch with you. Looks like if we move forward, it's not going to be to the next budget cycle, which will be, so that'll allow plenty of time, so.
Absolutely, and still looking forward to working with you guys, you know. I will point out, in the quote I provided, that, that was inclusive of a twenty-five percent discount for the first year for the first three Indiana counties. I'm hoping I have three by the end of the year, maybe I don't, so that's still available, but I just want to be sure that I'm being a hundred percent transparent on what the pricing would include.
We understand and we appreciate that, thank you so much, and good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so it looks like the next order of business would be E, which is under new business, approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four. It's an ordinance amending the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance.
I will say Melinda's not here, so if everyone votes the same way they did on the original ask, this will be a tie and just gets tabled to the next month. So if any of the noes for the weights and measures are going to vote yes, you can have the vote, but if you, if you're going to just vote how you voted on the weights and measures, it'll just end up being tabled.
Can you make this?
Well, how can you project that's how we're going to vote?
I'm just informing you, if you vote how you voted previously, it'll be a tie and it'll be tabled to next month.
Yeah, is that a tie?
Because he didn't vote.
You didn't vote, you're a no, and she's gone.
One, two, three, four, five.
John, I'm the only no.
It was five.
Right.
Yeah, but they had to have four to pass.
I said four to pass.
Oh, okay, I like, okay.
But he's going to vote this time.
Yes, he gets a vote.
It could be a tie.
He's counting on that.
Approval, approval of the ordinance is not subject to, I'm going to take that as a conflict.
Trying to find a way around.
Okay, do I have a motion on the floor for item E, under new and old business?
Make approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four, ordinance amending the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance, which I understand was a cleanup. Is that correct, Pam?
Yeah, it's adding the new.
It's adding the new weights and measures position that's going into effect immediately.
Okay, but it's still subject.
So I have a first by Mr. Dear.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye. Aye.
So it doesn't pass?
Hmm?
Camera, yes.
What was it? Who?
I changed my vote.
Okay, what?
So it passed.
So it passed.
That was four to.
Four to two.
Yeah. It's kind of like going to the dentist, you know you need to go, but you don't want to, well.
Okay.
Yeah, for the sake of time, okay.
President Burton, I have a couple updates real quick, making sure, update on WIS. John Dittmer's and I met with them, we did a, accept the agreement as it was approved by the council for their analysis of job descriptions. Also, they're putting together, and hope to have it to us by the twenty-second of April, suggestions about how we might, what others have done, how we might implement what just went blank, longevity pay. And then the other thing is that they could not get done in time for this year was to look at. The thing that, oh, gosh, it's getting late, I'm forgetting. John Muller's the, what's the step system?
Tier.
Tier system. It'd take them longer to put that together, and it may not be available for this year, but they are working on it. Second item is that May sixth, my quarters will be submitting to us all the preliminary analysis for the budget, and I know I don't have anything else to do that night since the primary is the next day, so I'll be reading it, no, I'm just kidding. But it is available for us week in advance. The budget hearing is at four thirty on May thirteenth, no, excuse me, not budget hearing, his presentation to us is May thirteenth at four thirty. That evening, we have committed ourselves to make decisions about the budget expectations for this next year. And then Adam brought up to me that there was a discussion that needed to take place with the council and joint session with the commissioners concerning the three-point-one million dollars of state funds, and Adam, would you address that?
Yeah, so we, not everyone was there, but there were some council members who were present with the commissioners to hear from the state, Dr. Weaver on the SB four healthcare funds, anyway. So it was a very productive meeting. The way we left it was commissioners would like a joint meeting with council to discuss that. I think Becky Betsy had sent everyone a kind of email asking for information, if they have any suggestions for that particular. um, asking for information if they have any, um, suggestions for that particular budget. Um, I think originally we had talked about doing that on May thirteenth. Um, I think Mike Rogers' presentation slipped at least my mind, uh, so we may need to schedule something either after the commissioner meeting that day or some other time before the thirteenth. We have a June first deadline to, uh, opt-in, uh, so we will make sure we get, or at least the budget be submitted, so we will make sure that that, that happens if the county is going to opt-in. So we're in a little bit of a time crunch to get that done. I guess the question is, does the council want to schedule a joint meeting after a commissioner meeting later this month or on May thirteenth? Uh, I don't think there's going to be enough time to do it at five o'clock. I can only give Mike Carter half an hour, uh, to present, so.
Uh, I'll, I'll start first. I'm available either the, the next commissioner's meeting, after the next commissioner's meeting, or after the May thirteenth commissioner's meeting. Be a long day, but I'm available.
I'm also available. I'll make myself available for that, so. Do we need everybody there?
Uh, probably at least a quorum of council.
Four?
Yeah, so probably at least four. Um, I know Betsy previously had been operating under a May thirteen deadline for, for the meeting date. I know she's quick, so if we need to do it earlier, she probably could pivot. But, um, if the thirteenth after the commissioner meeting works, that would probably be the.
I'm in a position, I can pretty much alter my schedule to make it work, so.
I'll be there as well.
Okay, that's three.
I should be able to make it.
Four, okay.
Less than a, or something.
Hopefully not.
But I would ask that, Mr. Dear, if you could, I'm sorry. If you could send an email on your update on the information you just provided to all of us, that would be great.
Okay.
What would, I can, what would, you have a question? I can't read butts.
Is this mouth in trouble?
Yeah.
Were you making fun of me lying like that?
No, I was just very much with.
And, and then there's one, what additional, and this address is Adam, uh, he sent us out a memo about considering a bond, uh, discussion, uh, and I don't know what the timetable is on that, about roads and bonding that, uh, added money.
It was really an informational email, just, uh, I know the county for a long time had been under the advice that we can't bond for road projects, but that is really just related to property taxes cannot be used to bond. Uh, but the county is free to use added monies to bond for road projects, just like the county's allowed to use the jaillet to build a community corrections facility or jail.
In regards to the discussion, I for one would prefer we wait until we got the bonds done for community corrections, if at all possible, just to keep from, even though it's not increasing anyone's taxes, tax rate. To me, that's just a little over, overwhelming to the public if it isn't released in the, you know, in the appropriate manner. So I think it, for the, for the, um, if nothing more, but just to keep it straight in the taxpayers' minds, I personally would prefer that any detailed public discussions be made after community corrections bonding, but that's just my thoughts.
When is that? Whenever.
It's in the works at the moment, so.
About what? I mean, in the works? When? You have any idea of? I mean, because we would go through a process, the bonds for community correction after had been brought to us, and that would take a while. And then if we didn't look at road funding, it would push it into twenty twenty-six?
Well, for both bonds, it starts with the commissioners, so you can't just on your own initiate a bond for road funding. So whenever the commissioners are ready to move that, move that forward, they'll, they'll bring it forward.
Correct.
Makes sense.
Did you guys all hear what he said?
No.
Would you repeat that, Adam?
So for, any of these types of bonds has to initiate with a commissioner. So as, as for timeline, that's in their ballpark right now. So whenever they're ready to bring that forward, they will.
I think we'll just, in my opinion, we'll just jump the gun, trying to have a public meeting or a public conversation about it now.
But roads are, and they're, what you just said, roads would be their decision, even though we've had proposals in twenty twenty-two about what we need to do about road funding.
All the other questions?
Yeah, I, I guess I don't.
Lucas presented what it would take till the year twenty eighty-five.
Yeah, we'll all be done before the roads are fixed, right? So, I mean, the, the idea here is to eventually find a, a funding mechanism to accomplish the hundreds of millions of dollars of road projects that we have to do, right? So the added by itself will not be enough, so.
Right, great. So at least you're still around.
Huh?
So at least you'll still be around.
I, I, I will be like ninety, so I don't know.
Okay.
Got a shot.
I'm going to ask for someone to make a motion to adjourn, please.
I'm going to adjourn.
So I was, wait, Melinda made that motion.